Go call Ferguson.
Here.
Henrickson here, Hallsworth. No answer. Kramer.
Here.
Oops.
Here.
Acknowledgement of other attendees. Thank you Chuck, thank you Lon, thank you Jill and Terry. Call for changes. Need a motion to accept the agenda as presented, I assume.
May I make that motion?
Do you have a second?
I'll second it, but we really don't even need to make any, do we?
I don't know.
It's it's an informal, I mean, we can do it informally, but we don't need to do it formally, so.
Okay, well, anyway, let's finish this off.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that is carried. Only thing I'll say is, um, we're gonna run it informally, but I don't wanna see people talking over each other. Be courteous, please. Hallsworth here, it's three. Conflict of interest declaration. There being none, we'll move on to the work session items. A ton of Hermosa water users, meter, meet, or ing and technology solutions beak and meters. Ordinance clarification discussion. So. You know, we had talked about putting in the meters and the remotes, et cetera. This would be the bill for that?
Yes.
To do this to the extent that we were talking. And we have budgeted seventy-seven. So we have the money in the budget to do it.
The only thing I am concerned about is where everything else is at in the in the budget. Like, um, repairs and maintenance. We budgeted seventeen thousand dollars and we're already up to sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars. I mean, and we're only a quarter of the year into it. So I'm concerned.
Well, and they're pumping. Of the lagoon. I mean, we're over what, eighty thousand there already? And we're not done. I mean, unless we get loan grants, I'm thinking, like you had talked about earlier, that any of these extra monies need to go to paying for that lagoon expansion.
So you're talking the land apply that?
Yeah.
So what we've paid to Hill Septic so far, so in twenty-three, we paid him forty-one thousand four hundred ninety dollars. And then in this year, we've paid twenty-one thousand two eighty-five.
And we're not even close to that.
That's so far this year?
That's this year. And then we also paid City of Hot Springs thirteen hundred dollars.
So that's why I said.
And are there any any expenses? Did we plan on that in the budget at all?
Don't let it know.
No, so those, let's write that. I'm just stating that, so that's all money that's just had to be spent and yet was not budgeted for.
We could be at a hundred grand.
And.
Easy, you know.
And that is my problem. I mean, I think that that the the metering system is very, very, very important, but.
Possibly needs to be on hold for another six months to a year.
I think we at least have to wait until we're six months into the budget and see where we're at on, you know, on the equal dollars, you know?
We need to have loan grant put in by K L J for the booster and for the meters is what we referenced before. Combine the two. You know, and then if there's more infrastructure, like we had over there on behind Manning on that sewer line that needs to be replaced, as well as many other places, we should be including some of that infrastructure on sewer in there too. I mean, there's still a lot of our money. That's gotta be used up before next year and we could get K L J to get in on the round now and put it in. And have time to be heard. And any of these wish lists need to be done.
Well, we have a meeting with Anthony. Thursday.
Thursday.
Is it at four thirty or three thirty? She has three thirty, I have four thirty. Never mind, we'll find out.
It's a half in the middle.
It's not three at all. It's only a half.
Sorry.
And a good thing is to have Black Hills Council, local government to do it up. Since they're free. Meet with Jennifer. Get the paperwork going.
So we'll bring that up on Thursday.
Yeah, I think we should. I I just don't see how how we can okay it now, Jill, as much as we want to. I just don't think we can. Financially okay it now, you know?
That's alright.
I I.
You were you were part of that.
No, I wouldn't say that. Totally different, but.
Well, we've got North Water Sewer Line yet to finish out. We don't know where we're gonna be at on that project.
Where is it out with the sewer for being repaired?
Pardon?
Where is it out for the sewer being repaired?
Well, over there by Hammers.
Out here on seventy-nine.
Oh, that hundred feet that's in the floodplain. That the requirement is to put that two-inch foam over it, put the waterproof lids on. K L J needs to put that spec together. Well, we're waiting.
We're waiting, yeah.
For Maces. So we won't be able to.
The letter has been sent, to my knowledge, um, by the attorney. And so we're just waiting for that to come back.
So it won't be going to the mail before we'll have a response unless we have one sooner from Maces, because she's got thirty days from receiving the letter.
From receiving, okay. Well, I think we have to. It's just too too close. I mean, we need to make sure those things are closed out first, you know?
Anything further on metering?
Jill, do you have any other new information? Or we have everything that you have?
I don't. I just was wondering, um, that cost includes we we need to install those, correct? The town? How long would it take you to install those?
The new meters?
Yeah.
It depends.
Like two weeks?
No way.
A year?
You gotta go down in the pit, check to rewire, to wire them, do you? Are all of them or any of them?
Change all the meters out. Well, actually. These meters are all compatible. But what we're gonna do, that was the idea. Two or three years ago, the standardize with Badger, so that the bottoms are all the same, so when you change the top, then that's compatible even with the brand-new software. Those heads are still compatible because that's why we went that way. So every time we upgraded, we didn't have to change everything else. The only thing that's gonna get changed out is the black touchpad. To go to the other style. And it just mind boggling to me, because I remember when Bernie and I first looked into that, it was like thirty-five, thirty-six thousand dollars.
Forty grand.
That was a lot of money then, and we just kinda shied away from it, thinking that a couple of years down the road, it's only got budgeted and one thing or another, and now it's seventy. I mean, it's just absolutely ridiculous. I know at the time that we looked at it, you know, the software that was involved and the unit that went on the water tower up there, the satellite part of it, but it actually, the only thing that really needed changed out was the touchpad. And those, you know, we gotta go around, take them off and install a new one, you know? On the bottom, you ain't gonna get it done in two or three days, that's very fast. So, we're that bad.
Thank you.
As far as the lagoon something. It is what it is. I mean, I had conversation with Harvey Nagaba today, and he knows that I was shaped pretty bad, because all this water just going to hot springs, each kinda thinking that they should have it on their land. And I said, well. Side of that point is that we cannot put it on land till May first. And whether or not the supply is okay is another story, but he's smelling money. Thinking they were spending a lot of money taking that to hot springs, and it could be down here. And I said, well, don't talk to me. I just talked to D N R, and they're the ones that told the first strings on how it happened. Why God, why God drives to here and get this straightened out? And I said, well, Carl, who's the guy you wanna talk to? Here's his phone number. Knock yourself out. It costs us less because not transfer, uh, transport at this park, so it may be a win-win, and we are paying disposal fee to the hot spring on top of it. But I said, you know, it's been a pretty hot potato. On her lap, order those. If you wanna know what it was, I said, the same damn stuff you put out on your feed. You know, all of it was gonna, you know, that was a big rant and raving about people on fairgrounds and that stuff, you know, and so I said, well, I guess what you need to do is call D O R and see if you, you know, if you can wind it by, the the site has to be approved by them. That may save us some money in the long run. I don't, it has to save at least a mileage, if nothing else.
Yeah, we're only a few weeks out from that now, thank goodness.
Got to figure out a way out to pipe it over to Nagabas and get it on this other piece.
Can't meet the criteria.
Do what, Chuck?
They can't meet the criteria, or we've been talking before.
No.
I'm talking farther.
That other piece.
Well, we're two calls to the creek.
There's a lot of battles there that can be handled with this over across D N R and and other scenarios out there that we pointed out before.
Well, and you know, his cry was that that was the reason the lagoon was put on their land in the first place, so that they could harvest the water when we had it. I said, that's all those, you know, I mean, we've already been through that twenty-three times and, you know, if you can cut a deal with D N R, they think that they wanna put it west out here on that property out there, but it still has to meet the criteria, the key lie and the, you know, first demand.
That's why to me, we should quit pumping. Wait till the first demand. There's no reason to pump right now. We're holding our own.
I didn't think we were.
And we're not gaining.
I don't think we were pumping.
They did yesterday, two loads.
Really?
That's why I say I wouldn't even.
That I seen.
I thought they were told not to pump.
They took two loads out yesterday that I seen. One was first thing in the morning and then one was after afternoon.
I thought they had quit the end of March.
My knowledge told them to.
Pardon me?
I don't know that anybody has ever said anything to call them.
Yeah, it was said.
When?
Last meeting. The meeting before prior. I'm sorry, I wasn't here.
I didn't hear nothing about ceasing pumping.
They were supposed to be called and told to stop for now.
Me too.
Okay, I'm hearing things, so there we are.
I never remembered a motion.
So we're done looking at this water meter thing?
Yeah.
Just gonna table it for now?
We're just gonna table that for now.
Okay, when we get back into it, I got some questions on it too.
Well, you can certainly bring it back. Go for it right now.
Well, I just wanted, so it looks like we have to have the software in place to use it in order to implement it. Do we have that right now, or do we know what that's gonna cost?
It it works with our G Works, right?
Does with you?
Yeah.
Uh, it's compatible. There is other software, and I think when we upgraded this last time, that it was able to take that software, whether or not.
Yes, it's.
So everything's in place. I mean, it's just, you know, we need to change out the remote and that's all there. I mean, that was the idea back years ago, that we stayed with one brand and they assured us that every upgrade that came along, this stuff is still compatible.
So Chuck, um, the endpoints, is that one per house? The Orion L T E M C Cellular M endpoint? There's two eighty of them on here. Does that mean it's one per house?
Yes.
So then there's probably, do you know how many customers that require service for that?
Two.
Two, we got like two eighty-three right now. Total water customers?
Yeah, that was, so. Three eighty-three?
Three eighty-three.
Two eighty-three.
Two eighty-three.
Yeah.
Okay, so then we would need to get some more of those at some point too.
Number's not quite high enough.
Yeah. And do you know what the, um, M twenty-five gallon eight-dial H R E is quantity ninety?
Can plug that?
So.
Just show up on the line here. Uh, don't put this.
No, it's ninety of those. What's that guy's?
Oh, those are, let's see. That's the heads. With the twenty-five foot lead.
Next Friday.
Push tight water. Um, yeah, that's what that is, is, um.
Nineteen?
Yeah.
That's just a copper.
So what is, so obviously you don't need one per house, there's only ninety of them then, right?
Well, I don't know what that is, is this a quote or something?
I can't keep up.
Yeah, this is the quote for meters. And this is some nine grand total, so we're getting ninety of these at about a hundred bucks each, so I'll figure out what those are. If you don't know what they are.
Well, it's an M twenty-five, that is actually the bottom. The eight, maybe it's the top. Ninety more do stop, but that can't be because they've changed out. I don't think there's any of the old style that's even.
Uh, off seventy-four.
And an awful lot of the meters have got changed out. So anything that had a million gallons on them got changed out.
So was this your estimation of ones that needed to be changed out yet to be updated? Back in that day?
I don't see where they come to that because.
Well, back with Bernie, back then, we had a lot of them.
Date on that.
Well, there is none, and that's the problem. This is updated three-three-twenty-four, but that would only make sense that it's saying we need ninety more of them to finish out the switch.
Because ninety-five percent of them, ninety-eight percent of them have been changed out.
So that number wouldn't be accurate.
No way.
So we need to work on that.
To add a lower part there?
We can tell, I mean, Jill can tell through the meter readings, the logs, which is, you know, first, not some two million, I don't know of anything that's got a million on it right now. So that's kinda where you change them out at.
Seems like there's still two, but I'll look and I read meters next week again, so we'll go through that again.
Be nice to make note of those. I just changed one out today.
Oh, okay.
Over here, Forgy's.
Okay.
And that with the old style, it had a million on it, but he had a brand-new meter. The problem was that he hadn't stepped it out so that I could get the new hand, of course, with all the bad mouthing and the no trespassing signs and one thing or another, and I had Joe call him, and I said, I don't want to step foot on that property. No way. She probably will get a beating tonight, but if he gives permission to go in there change that pot out.
Good that's done. Thank you. Anything further?
Well, the fairgrounds are making some changes down there. They, our control in there today to put in some new water lines, and we had discussed this about the very minimum they needed to put locator wire on the new stuff, and uh, there's some issues in that meter pit. Of course, that's a larger meter. I think that's two inch, I believe. But that then needs to be addressed. I don't know if they're gonna have, he finally did get a license. So that's not an issue at this point. I didn't change over, they're gonna put in five new yard tires and, I don't know, around three hundred feet or something, new pipe and one thing or other. It's always been a catch twenty-two. They always want me to tell them where stuff's at, but there's not any record of it because it's coming.
Right, exactly.
I've actually used my license several times for stuff they have done, because they couldn't seem to find somebody that was licensed to do their stuff. So. Let's name it that. And that one actually does have a touchpad on it, so obviously it's compatible with going to the other style.
Yeah, so.
Okay. So. Moving on to ordinance clarification discussion.
We're still on water, because we have the, um. What is the ordinance clarification discussion? On the item?
The minimum charge, maximum charge, on, off.
What, okay, that's what we're talking about, okay.
That okay?
Yeah. I have lots of questions on that.
We all do, I think. Do you wanna start, or more than I can?
So I did go out and work with Jerry one day. We went through the whole entire town. And we worked off of, um, Google Maps to identify every single empty lot. Those have all been put into a spreadsheet, empty house, empty lot. Uh, I actually have sixty-nine of them on here that we identified. I think at the time Jerry thought it wouldn't be this complicated. He thought we'd just flip a switch and start filling everybody. But there are some of these, um, homes that were previously built before we did the, um, the work. We did a a work session where we, on February twentieth of twenty-twenty, where water shut off at Kirk Stop and Curz, no charge and no monthly fee, only turn-off and turn-on fee. So that's where most of those houses at that time stopped getting a bill. Was February in twenty-twenty. Because this was, there was a motion made to do that. So now I can go back and start billing those folks again. I could easily start doing that, but do we wanna wait till we identify absolutely everybody? Send them letters and then let everyone know that they will be starting to be billed again?
I think that would only be fair.
Okay, and then also, I have no way of identi, I mentioned this to Jerry, that I have no way of identifying if there's water or not to most of these empty lots. I would have to have Chuck help me with that. And Jerry indicated, well, Chuck doesn't get paid to help you with that, so I'm kinda left dead in the water. I'm not, I don't know where the water lines are up to these empty lots, even if they have a water line up to them. So I would need Chuck's help to go through this list and identify everything.
A lot of these have the names. You should be able to call the property owner and say, do you or do you not?
Okay.
And I could come help you with that if you would like.
Okay.
So what your feelings are is even though the water is off, and was requested back in that day, you're going to bill them a regular monthly bill.
For minimum.
And if they don't pay it, then you're taking the meter and you're gonna charge them a brand-new tap fee when they want the water turned back on.
So who maintains the lines when they're off? Doesn't the city so that you can go back in if the if the water breaks right there? You know, who's maintaining it?
Who, if it's shut off to the empty lot, how is it gonna, you know, like these lots over here are over twenty years old and they've never had water to them?
Which lots are you talking about, Dan?
The ones across from the coffeehouse, for example.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, that's been a long time.
And when are you ever gonna have a problem when they're shut off, have to shut off there? Are we gonna charge minimum fees for them lots? I mean, it's just ludicrous. You talk to City of Rapid City or anybody else about this, as I have. None of them do that. And if somebody's going away for a vacation or summer, snow, you know, anything else, they do a shut-off fee and a turn-on fee.
Well, they can do that too.
That's what got voted in in twenty-twenty. Now, the November twenty-first meeting is highlighted right there. You can read, yeah.
Absolutely.
For all connections to water and sewer, even if the water taps are turned off for a period of time. And then it says the meter will be removed. Whose job is it to remove it? Chuck? And the service capped and a sep- and separated from the town system at the property owner's expense. So then we, Chuck removes it, we would turn around and build the property owner for that.
Okay, that's the way I took it.
And you're, like I said that night of this, you're opening up a whole nother can of worms, because most of them have not been touched. You go to jerk that meter and take the spuds out after twenty years over there, you're gonna have leaks, you're gonna have messes, you're gonna have problems. You know, and I'm not gonna be billed for taking something out that's been there that I have no intention of ever using again. Whenever I go to develop them lots, it's gonna be a brand-new line. I'm not gonna trust that existing line. It's gonna be a brand-new meter, a brand-new setup, all the way through. And the same circumstances like when you've got me down here on the bank building. That you're gonna start billing me on that. Well, we're under renovation. I'm gonna turn it back on, but when that time comes and we're under renovation, I'm waiting for engineers right now to put the sketch together for that, for structural and everything that we're gonna do for the inside, and then we're gonna move forward, but it's turned off. So you're gonna come in and take the meter and then charge a full tap fee because the guy's under renovation? And it's not only me.
That's why this is up for discussion.
Yeah, and that's not only me who is gonna have that problem. I mean, when you get a hold of Bell or, you know, you're gonna go after G and G for every single empty lot there and you're gonna want him to pay? You know, when there's nothing there, Glenn Johnson, Craig Nelson, I mean, the list goes on. When you're gonna have a bunch of rattlesnakes in here waiting to strike because of that? You know, we want it turned on and you have a turn on fee, and if we need to raise the turn on fees, raise the shut off fees, then so be it. But you ask any of these other communities about that, and none of them are paying a regular monthly bill for a water shut off. If they go to Arizona and come back, they pay a higher bill for turn on and shut off. But I asked the people in Custer, I asked the people in, of course Fairburn is not a good comparison, um, and Keystone, I talked to them up there because they have so many that shut off on their commercial accounts and they're just shut off. And then when they come back, they're turned back on. But they have the usages, they have the users. And there's no maintenance to them properties because everything's five foot down. If anything happens from that meter on theirs, it's inside their building. Where we have ours are meter pits, except for new construction.
So my suggestion would be was to table this and everybody do some research and come back with some different ideas. Because obviously this one is not flying very high. But we've got to come up with a solution.
So if I may ask, what's the, what's the issue you're trying to address with this?
Maintaining lines, making money for the town, how to make this work so that, I mean, this was, this was a Jerry Stiles thing, so I don't have all the answers.
So is the idea that if the property's unused, you want to make sure the water's turned off? So there, there's not a potential leak there?
My understanding, to the best of my knowledge, was he wanted to see the maintenance, keeping the line maintained. The city still has to do that, whether you've got your water on or off. If it's off, you're still maintaining for the people to come back and be able to just flip a switch and have water. They're still maintaining that.
But they're not, I mean, it, but to his point, I mean, there's not really any work involved until you go to turn it back on and then find out if it does or doesn't work then, right?
Correct.
So that's, that's kind of why I'm asking is, um, I mean, what are they gonna be, technically, what are they gonna be paying for with this fee? And then, um, you know, if we just want to make sure that they have the water off, so then, uh, there isn't a potential leak, then, I mean, you could use the fees to track if they're on or off that way too, so.
Yeah, there's a multitude of ideas. Yes, ma'am?
As I recall it, the issue was, the main issue was the fact that, um, all the pipes are in the ground, water sewer, they're all in the ground. And they all have to be maintained. And so I'm there year round. I pay my bill year round. But, um, a couple doors down from me, there's an empty lot. Well, granted, it's empty, so they're not using it. However, the pipes run right by their, right in front of their property. So there's, there's the use there. You see what I'm saying? And so that was the way I took it, was it, it was
Yeah, pretty much.
To always be maintained. And it, and it's not, I mean, uh, one of the theories was, um, it's not my fault that you're not using your water, you know? Um, so why should I be paying, you know, totally when you've got the pipes right there too, you know?
So, so the idea is you're, is the empty lots are paying into the maintenance fee for the whole town for all the pipe work because they have pipes?
Because they should, because everybody else has, right, that was kind of one of the theories. And I'm not saying it's right, I'm not saying we need to go there, but I'm just explaining what it was before, so.
Thank you.
Um, I personally, um, I mean, those lots, those empty lots in particular, in my, in my mind, they don't have somebody coming home every day or twice a day or, or four times a day or whatever, driving on our roads, putting any use on that, you know? Or any pressure on that. So should their fee be the same? No, I, I don't personally think it should be the same. But where, where you start and, you know, where you put the fairness in is a whole nother, you know?
Yeah, so, so you're trying, so you're trying to balance the so-called fairness between people that pay for water every month and then that maintenance fee is billed in versus people that don't pay for water at all because they don't have any water service going?
Correct.
I mean, if, so if somebody, regardless of whichever entity that this is, the monthly biller or the person with the empty lot, if there is work that needs to be done on the pipes going to that lot, what's the cutoff to where they have to pay versus the city pays or the city pays and builds it? Type of thing?
See, that's.
There is none.
There is none. The city pays for the maintenance. Well, that's another thing.
Well, I mean, so if you wanted to be fair about it, wouldn't it be more fair that if, if it required work going to their lot, then they should, um, I guess, share in that cost with the town or?
It's a development, because that's the whole thing that I've always said. And it's because there's more behind this story than that do that drib- has driven on this. It's no different than me having forty lots over here that are gonna be served by water. So you want to charge me for them forty lots to reserve me the right to use your water is what it's saying.
Right.
These lots that haven't been used for thirty years over here, yep, water's running right by them, there's a tap already coming out. You should be happy that that, number one, the tap is there, it's never leaked. We just had our system checked, we're below the one percent to three percent right now. So we know we're not having a tap problem. But the whole thing is, it's been that way forever. If you aren't using that lot, you aren't tapped into it, you're not costing the town anything either. The other side of it is, is the properties that have water services to them that have a building on them, them are the ones that are saying, okay, we're gonna reserve you the money to use that building and use that water. And if you're gonna shut it off in the winter and start it back up in the spring, then we're gonna have a service charge on that building because we're, your, your water connection is there and you are hooked up. But as far as maintenance, if something busts or breaks, it isn't gonna be because of that empty lot, it's because of something in the main that's already there. Because that empty lot never created or caused that problem. So to go around Rick Mills, that house has been vacant over fifty years. You're gonna, and there's a meter pit there and you're gonna go in and charge him a monthly fee on a house that needs to be tore down, but just because there's a meter pit. So you, you can't fairly do that, you know, and.
In your opinion?
And it's also the people that have the most empty lots. You know, this was driven on aspect of that.
This is not my motion.
I'm not dragging that at all.
See, and I, and I feel like, like you said, your, your forty lots up here, I mean, there's nothing going to them.
Because there's a water line running right in front of them.
Yeah, but nothing's been tapped into, there's no roads, there's no, there's nothing there, you know? Yeah, there can be with a lot of money and a lot of time and whatnot, work, but, but there's nothing there, you know?
So then if he does run infrastructure over to those forty lots and he starts to slowly sell them off, we're gonna charge him a monthly water and sewer fee for every single lot?
Well, that's, that's the point here. That's what I'm saying. This is, this is a, it was the start, it was not, I don't know, but it was the finish.
Gary over there's got five empty lots right now. He's not gonna be happy when he's getting a five hundred dollar bill every month for an empty.
And there's an honor to development in Rapid City that does that. I could take you to ten of them right now. And they pay, the main tap fee is what we do in development.
We got it.
And then individualize every lot as they build that lot, there's a tap fee and a user fee. You know, that's common practice, always has been. And to me, this is only complicating, it's not solving. It's creating a homacy.
Table it and come back with better ideas.
Make that motion and we table it.
Well, it's a, it's a work session, you don't have to.
Oh, okay. Well, let's move on then.
We're just at a standstill. Okay. Conflict of interest. This is a big issue. It was brought up in the municipality's book. Um, in my estimation, and I'm sure I'll be put under the bus on this one, and that's okay. Was a motion made at the last meeting and voted on by a party that was involved in it. And to the best of my knowledge, should not have been the motion made by and or voted on by that particular board member. In defense of Linda, because my understanding, I was not here, the statement was made, well, that's only if it applies to money. It is not. Under Robert's Rules, page three oh eight. First, you need a definition of conflict of interest. A conflict of interest is a question of personal, direct personal or monetary interest that is not common to other board members of the organization. When you are specifically named or you are putting forth a motion involving property that you own, that is a conflict of interest. And I think as a board, we need to define what our interpretation is, who qualifies for what? Because in my opinion, and this is my opinion, in my opinion, if you're going to play that game, then it goes two ways. What disqualifies one doesn't disqualify the other. It needs to be fair and straight across the board. It is not. I would like some suggestions on what you guys deem is a conflict of interest because I just about come apart on some of these pertaining to private interest and public duty and that type of thing, and I find a lot of it very, very unjust.
I think you need to read that case law that Mitch handed out last time.
I did read Mitch's case law. I don't have a great deal of faith in Mitch. That is part of the problem.
But that case law went to the Supreme Court of South Dakota and it brought up the monetary, as well as it brought up the judiciary, as well as it brought up the curiary portions of a conflict of interest. Whether it was the individual in that one, Hurstead, I may have slaughtered his name, but that owns Waldrug, sits on the easy, sets on the town board of Waldrug, as well as I believe Anderson was the other one named in that case, that also sets on them and then have their own truck stops, have their own convenience stores also above and beyond from what Loves had in that circumstance.
You could have this one, it's already marked.
And that's why when Loves brought that forth, the circuit court judge tried to make Wall, city council, give Loves a building permit. And in that circumstance, it was also then read in that lawsuit that the others went through the conflict of interest, reviewed the conflict of interest. As a board, motioned they didn't feel it was a conflict of interest, brought it back to the Supreme Court then to judge whether the, um, circuit court was out of line ruling in favor of the city council of Wall and allowing them to act on that case law. Supreme Court came back and said this civil court was wrong in telling the council that it was a civil and conflict of interest problem and that it should not have had the right as a civil court to rule on a conflict of interest with the members of the board as what they voted on the subject that voted and how they voted for the subject. So that they should have allowed what went on in that conflict of interest.
I think that's a little way beyond where we are at.
I'm gonna finish, please zip it.
Um, it doesn't have to be verbalized that way. You can just say, please.
But please.
And I'll take care of it, thank you.
And it was a matter in them circumstances where at the end of the case law, when that was all brought out, it was plain and simple that they said they didn't have investment in the land, they did not have an investment in any of the portions of the development, that it was health, safety and welfare is why they voted, what they voted because of the location and the purpose of what was going to be put together on the circumstances.
All right, so Donna?
Well, I think that's a little beyond where we're at. I, at the time, I questioned that because in my, I do not believe if the circumstance concerns you that you can make a motion and then make the motion and then vote on it. Because you were the one, you are the one that the circumstance was, was about.
Great. Um, the other part is there's, I still have an issue with when you made the motion for Carriage Hills and the tap fees. And if it was unpl- or if it was platted, you didn't have to pay the increase. And you made the motion and voted. Whose peculiary issue was that? Was that not you involved? Yes. I'm sorry.
It wasn't on Carriage Hills that that motion was made. It was Mr. Stiles sending in the audience, bringing up the aspect that he didn't want his RV park to be able to be classified into a new judgment of tap fees. And so he is the one that requested any plats that are existing are grandfathered in. And if you want to go back to the minutes on that.
Who made the motion and who benefited financially? You.
I have not benefited financially a dollar.
You will.
Not at all. I have not developed any of that problem.
Not yet, but when you do, you will.
He says I'm going to.
And you should have turned around on this deal and said, right at the beginning of the meeting, conflict of interest. I am listed as the party involved in this. Therefore, I recuse myself from any action on it and I can't vote. If that's the case, because you're talking financial stuff, if that's the case and it's only financial, Donna can vote on Chuck. She's not on Chuck's business.
If you would read into that case law, that case law of the Supreme Court, what it also said is that if the members do not feel that it's a circumstance that two thirds of the board can vote that they feel it is a conflict then.
Okay, I have a conflict with the two thirds. Two to one, vote is two thirds. But Mitch claims it is not. Well, it's sixty-six point six percent. And any way you deviate out, it comes out at two thirds. But we can't do anything about that. That's still a quorum. Deb?
I was just wondering, that, I remember that meeting, and I do believe that there was a full board at the time. And even if Dan would have voted for it, the rest of the board had already passed. So his vote wouldn't have even made any difference.
It still should never have been allowed to be made a motion by him and or voted on him. It should be totally disqualified.
Okay, and when he made the motion, I made the comment, whoa, whoa, wait a minute. I don't think that, that's right. And Linda said, oh, well, you know, but if we're oh welling it, it should have been tabled and not even voted on that night.
Deb?
I'm not even talking about that situation. I'm talking about Carriage Hill situation.
She moved to a different situation.
Yeah, she moved totally to that situation.
Well, that happens frequently.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
At that meeting, and we're talking not about Carriage Hills, we're talking about just the last meeting.
we're talking about just the last meeting where we were removing a subject off of the agenda. I stated at that point that I the way I understood it, the way I understood it, he could vote. That's the way I took it from what Mitch had said. So I, so we went ahead with the vote.
But he made the motion.
He did make the motion, that is true.
Which he shouldn't have made the motion. And I questioned you and you said, I think,
Okay, one at a time, please.
And I think it should have been tabled right then and there until we had more information.
I understood that Donna, but I was fairly sure that, that what Mitch had said was that it could happen.
But you weren't positive.
So that being said, I have discussed it with Cal and, and I told Dan the same thing. I said if we get to where next meeting Mitch is here and he says that it was an illegal vote, I am more than willing to rescind that motion without any problem. But I honestly did it believing that it was legal and true and Cal voted on it.
I could probably go with it other than.
Knowing what he was voting on, because we've discussed this and.
Why would you allow someone that is named in the problem to be the person to make the motion and vote on it?
Mitch said it that night when we asked him.
The previous vote you weren't allowed to talk or vote on? Previously you were not allowed.
When he brought that case law in and said, I feel you can make a motion on this because it is a subject on the agenda, whether it's your name or not.
Well, then there's no point in ever having a meeting that you can't vote on or you can't make a motion on or anything. There's nothing fair and just.
Any other decision then other to remove it from the agenda. It's not financial, it's not.
I think that we need to come back with what we all define as conflict of interest and reach an agreement so that we have something in writing that what this board believes is conflict of interest is in agreement with all board members. Is this to me is crap? Yes.
If I remember correctly, Mitch gave a copy to the office of what they have just passed through not very long ago in Keystone. And I don't, I can't find that copy in my paperwork and you never got it either.
I didn't either.
So he, he asked that we looked at that because they went through theirs and they didn't necessarily like exactly how Robert's Rules had it. And they also, we didn't know. And we should have tabled it.
Well, to me, it's just ludicrous that the person that is being discussed is the person making the motion to free himself of any issue. And I just find it wrong that you would be allowed to vote on it. It's like a prisoner coming in and saying to the judge, I really didn't do it. And the judge goes, okay, you wanna vote on that?
But that's a whole different base than removing something from the agenda and that was asked to our attorney that night.
Well, it's still.
He did not allow you to vote before.
Our attorney is the one that brought it up that night, that's why we asked him.
He didn't let you vote before and he wasn't here the other night.
The night before that, that's why we asked him. When that was removed, Mitch said, why aren't you removing it?
We're making no headway, so let's go make our own suggestions and bring it back. Because we're not making any headway, there's no point in it. Bring it back as a suggestion and we'll go through and see what we have.
What's Linda got?
I, I just want you to make sure to get hold of Mitch and Keystone and see if we can get a copy of theirs to look at and.
Yeah, Terry, would you please do that? Thank you.
We can go through that and.
And it was their conflict of interest?
It was their policies and.
Code of conduct.
Code of conduct and, yeah.
Okay.
It was.
He said what, eight or nine page deal or something?
The whole problem is we've got code of conduct, we've got all this stuff and none of it is ever followed, none of it is ever brought to fruition of punishment or repercussion or apologies or anything else. It is never acted on appropriately. Has not been in the last seven years that I've been on this board. Yes. Oh, no.
Oh, yes.
And part of the issue with that was because there isn't actually a procedure for reprimands, you know.
There was, there's somewhat.
Well.
But if you're not gonna write the letter, reprimand, put it in a file, what the hell's the point? Why do we have all this? Nobody has followed it in seven years.
Well, that's why.
And I brought it up and I've taken it to the, to the Custer County. Well, they won't act on it because they're fearful. So there you are. And you know, to me, it's, it's it's pointless. Okay, move on to fee schedule. One of the issues that has come up is the
Notary service.
Notary service. And that would be the issue of the notary charging per signature or per page or per, if there's a three-page document and there's one signature on it on the front, one on the back, is that two notary charges or just one? Gail was under the understanding that it was ten dollars per signature. Doesn't matter how many times you do it, each one is a ten dollar fee. This is not clear in our fee schedule.
So let's make it clear today. Is it gonna be per signature?
Yes ma'am.
So I noticed, I was looking on the website today and on there on the services, it says notary ten dollars per signature. That's what's stated on our website, so.
So this on our fee schedule.
And this came up because Jerry said he had to pay twice.
But he did not.
Okay, so I don't understand why that was such a disaster.
Well, even at that, he should have had to pay twice. If he had it notarized here and.
He paid the first time and the second notary is not us.
No. So it's irrelevant as far as that goes, he only paid once here. Had you guys done the front page and then the back page, it would have been twenty dollars, it's two notary fees.
Okay, well then Joan, how that started that day was Joan said when they bring it back in the office, we shouldn't be charging for this bottom part. Which then we didn't charge anybody for the bottom parts. I think I told you, you had to come back and give me ten and you didn't have to.
And since it was, we let it go because it was consistent. But it needs noted on here, notary service, ten dollars per stamp and signature.
Okay.
Well, that doesn't mean I'm saying gospel here, I'm saying that's what my suggestion is. To clarify it on here.
That's what we've been doing and it wasn't an issue until this happened.
So if you bring something in and it's got six different spots, it has to be notarized, that's sixty dollars.
Correct.
Okay.
The, is, was there anything else on the fee schedule that you? I had on the vendor permit, I have on there open for discussion.
Okay.
Did you still wanna leave that hanging on there, I think?
Well, I think that needs to be reworked because obviously it's, is it for if you're in the street, if you're in a building, in a community building, if you're in.
Well, the thing of when you leave open for discussion on there, then we can make our rules or we can decide as a board.
The vendors apparently had a fit because they were paying per table plus a twenty-five dollar vendor fee, so they were up to fifty-five, sixty bucks. Twenty-five and thirty-five or thirty, whatever, fifty-five to sixty dollars just to come down here. So then it came into play, a lot of the outside facilities have a fee, but it's like a rental fee and it's one fee because they're in a community building. Where we don't have a community building. So do we waive vendor fees if it's like the, the vendor fee that they're going to be having? Do we assess Hermosa Connects the vendor fee and have it all under the umbrella of Hermosa Connects and just charge twenty-five dollars to them as a fee? And let it balloon through them with a qualification to them, what do we do?
Does Hermosa Connects, are they only for the ones in the community center? Or do they also provide the umbrella for the people down at the fairgrounds for when they do stuff?
No, they don't.
So they're only for?
Well, when I, when I said umbrella, I'm just saying that the vendors coming in would be listed under Hermosa Connects as one entity versus individual entities which would qualify them as twenty-five bucks a piece. They don't wanna pay that and that gets really pricey to make up that sixty bucks.
I agree with that, yeah.
But the town also needs to make money, so where do we go with that?
That's where we leave that open for discussion.
That's why the last motion I made was that we waive all the fees for the vendors so that it is allowed where we don't have the problems and we move ahead. And that was handled and done and, and there were no fees gonna be charged. Because the proper way is to follow the ordinance, which would be any vendor that came through the door, whether they're under the community center or not, would be charge a vendor's fee. Straight across the board.
That's not straight across the board though, you waived it for everybody and now you're saying, but you know, it's open for discussion, so.
No, it's all waived. But if we're going to charge it out.
Thank you for the comments.
I'm just saying, I wish you guys could.
All I'm saying is if we're gonna do, I would just as soon waive it for the vendors that are coming for these big events. I have no problem with that.
And we did.
I, I didn't say you didn't. That's not what I'm saying, Dan.
Doesn't get charged either.
I believe what Vicki's trying to say is in the future.
It needs to be clear, why even have them have to come in and have this discussion? It needs to say simply waived for Hermosa Connect events or some such thing that makes it open. That's all I want, is it open?
The thing is though, we still want them to come in and fill out, they have their tax license.
All you have to do is require them, you know, ask Hermosa Connects, would you please come in and fill out the vendor's license and that's that. That all that has to be done. Well, that's not in a motion here, it does says open for discussion.
I think that the vendor.
Yes ma'am. Thank you for raising your hand.
The vendor, or not the vendors, Hermosa Connects should be the ones foreseeing what, that the vendors get their tax thing, that they know that they have to pay taxes.
I agree with that, 'cause that's a lot of extra work.
Okay, but then let's also.
I think it should be Hermosa Connects takes care of the vendors paying their taxes.
So the agit thing, because it's down at the county, to me, that's a differentiation of needing a vendor permit because that's down on county property. That's up to them, correct?
Correct.
Okay. But what I wanted to see on here is, yeah, it's open for discussion, but in general, it's waived.
It was a matter where we brought it up that they would.
I know that, it was brought up last year, we did the same thing, we repeated it this year.
So how, how do the vendors take care of their sales tax at, inside the community building that we have nothing to do with?
Linda?
Well, each, each person takes care of their own taxes.
Well, yeah, but I mean.
And, and then the organization that is putting the, the event on, you know, they charge per table, per whatever and that's, that's them that is handling that. In this particular case, it's very nice that we don't have the work to do. You know, the girls in the office don't have to have everybody coming in, blah, 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 you know.
Then that's why I think the.
But that being said, I, I kinda disagree, I think Vicki, we're on the, the county thing, I mean, that is within our municipality limits.
It's county property.
I know, county property, but it's.
I'm just saying. This is where the differentiation lies and where do we go with it?
I know, but yeah, I think.
Do we have the right to go down there and say, oh gee, you guys need to pay a vendor fee? But they're on county property and they paid a county property or a county fee there probably. Which is a guess.
And we've continuously.
Have they paid in the past anything to the city?
I don't believe so.
I don't either, but I'm just saying.
I don't know it, but I don't believe so. I think that that is, I mean, we need to look at that closer too and see if, I mean, that's kind of in a way, we're trying to do fairness and trying to do everything all, you know, straight across the board. It makes it damn tough, excuse my language, because the county, the county, I mean, if they're not getting charged at all, they're supposed to be, that's not our deal. And that's kind of a, well, it's a state thing that, that it would be hard to even keep track of it, in my opinion.
Well, what about when the rally comes?
And they won't tell you a damn thing, yeah.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm obviously new here, so I'm trying to piece together what's going on. So I, I just wanna ask some very basic questions here. So as far as, so we're talking about two different types of vendors. We got one down at the fairgrounds, which is owned by the county.
Custer County Fair.
Right, and then we got one that's in the, let's say, in the Hermosa town, which generally is down in the community center, right?
Well, the community sanity, center is totally separate from Hermosa Connects. Hermosa Connects is a business organization promoting businesses in town. The community center over here is a whole separate business.
Okay, so let's just forget about them for a second.
Right.
So where are these vendors gonna be in Hermosa if they're not at their fairgrounds? That's what I wanna know.
Well, the difference is county versus city for one.
Yeah, but I mean.
Turn around.
They'll be all over the town this time.
Be right over at the community center.
They're gonna start out at the community center up and down the streets.
Right, we're blocking off the street. Over here in front of the community center.
In front of the coffee house.
In front of the coffee house.
But it's not in the community center, that's the difference.
They rent out tables within the community center, yes. And they're on the street and they're in the parking lot.
Is that what the date is?
Up and down. There's gonna have, I think they're having some stuff at the, in the parking lot of the Catholic Church and at the, can't talk to them.
Is that the name?
Legion. And they're going to transport people back and forth to promote a bigger area.
Sure, yeah, what, my, my, what, what I'm just trying to get is like, because you were mentioning the community center is separate?
It's a business. In and of itself.
So what, I guess what I'm trying to understand was, again, very basic is, so if, when I ask it where they're gonna be and then they're gonna be in the parking lot of the community center, they're gonna be in the street, but sometimes they can be in the community center?
Yes.
But that's only dealt with by the community center, correct?
What, what's inside, yes, and I don't know how they do the outside. If there's rental fees paid outside, I don't know.
And so these vendor fees, which vendors are supposed to be paying them right now if they weren't waived?
Well, you could turn around and you could bill them individually or you could bill Hermosa Connects as a whole or just waive it. Because.
Okay, I, I'm just, what I'm trying to ask is like, I don't, maybe I just don't know enough about it, so I'm asking the wrong question, but.
Okay, I think I know what you mean though.
Yeah, okay.
Explain to him what we're having in June.
So in, in the past, before there was this big event, we'll just say a, a Fourth of July vendor, fireworks vendor came and he set up up at the gas station. So that's within the town limits. But it was not on town property. They were, they were on the gas station's property as I recall.
Yeah.
And, but they paid us a fee. A vendor's fee for selling their wares in our town.
Plus five percent.
Plus five.
Plus five percent, it was based on the daily fees that are on here, on the fee schedule.
Okay.
We've not had many other vendors, I guess, or things happening where we had much.
Other than setting up their fireworks.
Excuse me, let her talk.
Except for now. And this is a new organization, so they had their first vendors market, is what I'm gonna call it, last year.
That's Hermosa Connects?
That is Hermosa Connects. That is Hermosa Connects. We, as a town, voted to allow them to do that without paying us any vendor fees. We wanted them to get their feet off the ground, make it a, a, a working project. However, we should get taxes from each of those vendors, but we have nothing to do with that. They pay their own taxes, um, they pay it into the state, and then, and it says what township that they paid taxes to, and the state then gives us our money out of that. It has not, we have nothing to do with the actual taxes being paid, picked up-
Right.
Or anything.
Okay, um, so, I mean, basically, the, 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 the main issue here is that, you know, we wanna organize things such that the town will make money when people come to town to sell things in town, right? But we have to, we have to structure the, this, the payment schedule, or the fee schedule, or the taxes, such that it will incentivize people to come here, so that then we can then collect the revenue, right?
Correct.
So, um, I mean, you know, it kinda goes to the idea that, um, if you can actually raise more money in taxes by reducing the tax rate because you're incentivizing business, you know?
Yes, I, I, I understand what you're saying.
With the guy that was here, and he was, you know, complaining about, you know, of course they were complaining, but, you know, he was complaining. So, if, if I have this correct, the guy that was here was the gas station fireworks guy, or was that a different guy?
He wasn't the gas station.
They now, they now, I have a different company selling fireworks, and they're doing it down here at the community center.
Yeah.
And, um-
It's the owners of the community center who are selling the fireworks.
Yeah.
Oh, well, I didn't know that, yeah.
But, but those are, but we're not getting vendor fees from them, 'cause that's separate, though, right?
Right.
Okay. Okay, yeah, so this is-
So the vendor's fee, I, I mean, I understand what you're saying. You want the tax money to benefit the town. Okay, so, so here, here's where this one came about.
Right.
So, so let's just say the grocery store, for instance, down here, okay? The grocery store, they pay their own taxes. We get our tax revenue from that grocery store. Um, they don't pay a vendor's fee. They do pay a, um, flicker license fee, I think, but, but not an actual quote-unquote vendor's fee. However, they bought the property, and they pay the property taxes.
Right.
So their property taxes then kinda go for the road, you know, maintenance and whatnot. Where, just as an example, the fireworks guy, I mean, there's a lot of traffic in and out of there, a lot of traffic. And he doesn't own his building. He's just borrowing it from whoever, or leasing it from whoever to- so the, there's not that financial benefit for the roads and the usage of those roads. Am I making myself clear? Okay, everybody?
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
So, so, but here again, yes, for fairness, and for making sure that, for one thing, it's easier for the board. It's easier for all of us to know that everything is, you know, the same, and everybody's treated fairly. Um, where do we come up with that at? I mean, I, I also get, we want, we want them to be successful. Um, it was a, I did not see it, but I'm told it was an excellent, uh, deal last year, absolutely wonderful.
Yeah, it was.
And, um, brought in a lot of people.
So there's like a fair on, on the streets?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. And that, what, it's on the twenties?
Twentieth.
Twentieth, yeah.
Twentieth or twenty-first, one of the two, yeah.
It's on the twentieth of June.
Mm-hmm, this year.
So do you know how many, uh, so we're waiving it for the ones for this June, right now?
Yes, we voted to waive it for this June, again.
Okay.
Um, I think they said they had, did I hear sixty vendors?
Um, I've heard anywhere from forty to sixty.
Okay.
And the phone is still ringing.
And the phone is still ringing, yeah.
Okay, so for right now, we're waiving vendor fees, and how much are we expecting to get in tax percentage-wise? Is that already decided?
No. Uh, the problem with, um, South Dakota State Tax, um, they send us a check four times a year, twice a year.
Okay.
And, and they will not, absolutely positively, they refuse to break it down. So-
They won't tell you.
Yeah, so we, we don't know how much is from the grocery store, the gas, food miscellaneous. We don't know. And that makes it kinda hard, too, if we had a better idea of those things, you know, but, but we don't.
Yeah, so, so really, then the best way for the town is to do the vendor fees to get the money upfront, so they don't have to worry about the state dragging their feet, and then just giving us a check, and then, who knows what it's for?
Who knows what it's for.
Okay, I mean, that-
Kinda, does that, did I kinda make myself not quite right, Vicky?
No, you're okay.
I mean, you know, like, when I approach problems like this, what I like to do is work, is identify where I wanna be. Like, so in this case, it's, how much money do we wanna get from this, right? And then we can say, well, so if we have, let's just use the number sixty, you know, if we have sixty vendors, and we go, well, this is how much we, we would like to get, you know, and then we could just back calculate from there, type of thing, I mean.
See, I don't foresee ever charging them a vendor fee from here on out.
Right, okay.
I really don't.
Well, 'cause I think a lot of them have said that they had to pay a vendor fee.
They have to pay sixty bucks. They're not coming.
They're not gonna come in.
But if it's the-
And it's, it's good advertisement, advertisement for the town.
It brings so many people in, so the sales tax, if we knew what we were collecting, I think would be phenomenal. But we don't actually know.
And we would never know.
It could be a free weekend for them, because nobody from the state comes down here, checks to physically see if they are collecting the monies, and what they're doing on that, so.
Deb, thank you for raising your hand.
I was just, uh, saying, do you guys know who's handing out the papers to collect taxes?
I have no idea.
Hermosa Connect, I mean, I know when they go down here to the rock show, there's one individual, whoever's in charge, and they go around and hand them the forms that they need to fill out.
I'll find out tomorrow.
They do take, they do take- Yes, yes, down at the-
See, I wondered if they even-
Yeah, they do down there, down at the rock show, 'cause Brian was on in them, but they do take the form around, and hand each of them, and they have to keep track, and then send their monies into the state. They could keep track of it.
I'll check that out.
Or they send it in themselves. Well, I think Hermosa Connect should be-
I will talk to Belinda tomorrow and find out.
The ones that handle it. I was just wondering if that's-
That's a good idea, thank you. I will go down there tomorrow and check.
Yeah.
And I believe Nick, and now, what they were so upset at the meeting is they paid the monthly vendor permit fee, which was eight hundred bucks.
No, they didn't.
No, they didn't. They paid ten days, wasn't it?
Over the permit fee.
Wasn't it ten days plus the five percent?
Yeah, we only charged them like one fifty. They did not pay the eight hundred. I know that for sure. I look, remember looking it up.
No, they would've been about-
We, we voted, we talked about it in the meeting. I, I believe they paid one fifty, plus the five percent. Cause they were here-
Ended up getting a five percent waived that night.
Last night? Night, okay, but before, they did not pay the eight hundred then, plus five percent.
Was it waived the other night for this year or last year?
I wasn't at the meeting.
Well, I, I'm just throwing the question out there. Was it waived? I know something was waived. I don't remember what it was.
I made a motion to waive the five percent.
For this year?
For this last season.
Oh, last season.
Pay on, because they were under the understanding that they had to pay the vendor permit plus the five percent. They thought it was all included in our fee for the vendor permit fee.
Yeah.
So that's where I made the motion, okay, you get a, get out of jail pass free this time. Next time, they're gonna know, and which the seven-day one is two hundred.
Yeah.
It should be full amount, and if he's gonna go the full month, then it's eight hundred, plus the five percent. I, I mean-
They didn't pay no eight hundred dollars for a monthly fee. They, I, they paid one fifty.
That sounds right to me.
I think open almost three weeks.
He said something around ten days.
I thought he said ten days, too.
I thought he said ten days. I swear to you.
Cause they ran past Fourth of July-
Yeah, they went to like six.
By four or five days, plus the two weeks prior.
So, um, oh, sorry, I made a-
You're okay.
Um, so, I think it's a, the idea about having Hermosa Connects collect the tax for the town.
I will handle that tomorrow.
Think that's a good idea, because then we can track how much it is, and we could get the payment right away compared to the state.
Not gonna get that information.
It all goes through the state anyway.
It all stays. We don't see here, nothing.
But, but we'll at least know what the number's gonna be?
No.
No? Not, not even if they had it.
No, we'll know how many vendors.
No, we'll know how many vendors put in.
If them vendors wanna collect all cash.
Let's rephrase that. Who took the paperwork and filed it?
Yeah.
And I don't even know if we can get the number on that.
So, but-
They can hand out the papers, and if they turn them in, they turn them in. If they don't, they don't.
So, so I guess what I'm asking is, there's no town tax that we can levy to them. It's all through the state.
Well, that would be kinda why you have the vendor fee, but we aren't charging that. So, it's kind of a catch twenty-two.
So, so-
We just have to settle with what they're giving us for sales tax, but we don't know the amount.
So if they don't wanna claim it-
Of what? We don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I get you. And they don't have to claim it.
No, yeah, Deb.
Uh, another thing, I, you guys all waived it this year. You know, they're, they're getting forty-five to sixty vendors in there. They're making quite a bit of money. I mean, they're getting so much for their table, so much for setting up. I don't know how much the, that, um, Hermosa Connects is collecting. Is, is the community center getting the rental on the tables, or is the-
I don't know.
We could-
I walked away from all that, so I don't-
That many vendors in at one time, the town shouldn't just, like, get nothing. You know, set up a three hundred dollar max, you know, and then they can take each vendor, and go, okay, well, you owe the town fifteen. That goes to the town, or ten to the town.
Another work session, so that we can do something about this.
I mean, I, I don't think the town should make nothing.
We just need to put it on another work session, since we're blowing ideas by.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So the, so then with the thing with Hermosa Connects, is that we're just having them, or the idea is to just have them hand the tax paper to the vendor, and then it's on the vendor to then file it and pay the tax? Okay.
And I think we need a copy of each vendor, because we said to bring that up to the girls.
Yeah.
So the girls know who is in town.
Yeah.
And it may keep a few more of them honest that way. If they know that paperwork is being filled out, they have to fill it out, then we're going to have a copy of it at the town office, so they know which vendors are what. They may take the incentive to pay it in, but otherwise, it's a free weekend, collect the cash, do their thing.
Well, well, what I, yeah, what I'd like to do is just kinda figure out, well, what kinda numbers are we talking about range-wise?
Yeah.
As far as, you know, if, however many vendors show up, and then if in the future we do a fee, you know, in my view, the fee should be fairly low, to where it would encourage vendors to come, and then, like, there's like maybe twenty-five dollars, I think was a good idea there.
Or maybe Hermosa Connects pays the town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Just have Hermosa Connects, there's a, a set fee of, just set, setting one out there, not, not to be used for any other reason, but say Hermosa Connects has to pay the town of Hermosa a hundred and fifty bucks to host this.
Yeah, right.
Just a suggestion, not in concrete, just an idea. Yes, ma'am?
So, if we were charging fifty dollars per vendor, and there's sixty vendors, that would be three thousand dollars to the town.
Yeah.
But they won't pay it?
I, I know that. They won't pay it. So my point there is that you, um, we do need to come up with, like you say, a, a fee. So how do you do that?
Hermosa Connects pay us.
Right, exactly.
What happens down there, we don't care.
Right, exactly.
I mean, if we make four hundred dollars off of it, it's four hundred dollars we didn't have.
Yep.
Or if you put it at five, like I said, one fifty, I don't know, but then it's on them.
Right.
They pay the town the tamer.
Vendor's fees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Right. So then, so then when we're making this up, do we do, um, zero to ten vendors is this much? See what I'm saying? Do we divide it up, small, medium, large, extra large, you know, amounts?
Needs to be an overall fee.
Or a flat fee?
No matter how many vendors you've got, you pay three hundred dollars.
Cause they're gonna make money off of it. So we charge ten bucks a vendor, they're gonna charge twenty. You know, and so they're gonna make cash off of us.
Well, that's why we need to bring this to another work session, instead of beating it up and beating it up. Bring your ideas in, and sit here and do a roundtable about it, and see if we can come up with a bona fide plan. Does that work for everybody?
We have to remember, it's just like Sturgis or anything else. They did nothing in the beginning. They let them come, let them come, let them come, until it built. Then they started charging some fees, where it was, well, if you don't wanna be here, and you don't wanna pay fifty dollars, there's another guy in line waiting to take your spot.
Yeah.
The people, just like Wilson Park, Custer, when they had old Discovery Days, them people reserved the year prior, and they're not paying no fifty bucks. They're paying Custer a good fee plus tax revenue.
And I think we gotta build into it a little bit. We can increase it as time goes on.
Well, and that's, I think your idea, you're on the right track with, if Connects is gonna be that one, but with them being a nonprofit, they have to be careful. So it'd almost have to be the community center saying, okay, I'll be the vendor guy. I've got the sales tax license. I'll make sure that everybody's paying under ten bucks, getting Jill the forms, so she knows how many, so we have that track record, like you say. We make our four hundred bucks. It doesn't cost our girls anything but a file to keep track of everything that's there. And what happens on the state side, if they don't bring a person down here to monitor it, they're lost.
Well, it's our loss, too, though.
Yeah, but, yes and no.
We can't do anything about it.
Well, right, but, yeah.
But our loss isn't there, because we're gonna get extra gas at this station, extra at this, Pops is gonna get it, the coffee house is gonna get it. Our local people are gonna benefit from it. It's a shot in the arm that's lost.
Definitely. There were a lot of people here, and there was a lot of comments made about what an extraordinary event it was, and that they made big money. Yes, sir.
I would just, uh, make the suggestion before we move on, that, um, if, if this, so, there, large amounts of traffic generate a certain amount of wear on the systems, right?
Yep.
And so, I would just recommend that we si, that we consider some kind of a sliding scale, or something like that, to where if it just blows up, then we'll be getting the, uh, funds on the backend to then maybe pay for some stuff that might've, you know, happened maintenance-wise or whatever, so.
Put that on your stuff and bring it to the meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, please? Okay, can we move on to the garbage ordinance?
I might have one more thing on the fee schedule. Um, for the, we did our first hand permit application. I was gonna get that on the fee schedule. Um, also, you renew it annually the month of March. It does not stay down there. Are we charging them again annually, or?
Run that by me again. I didn't hear the beginning of what you said. I'm sorry.
Permits must be renewed annually in the month of March.
On the hen permit.
What hen, oh, hens.
Hen permit. So, as they renew it for the next year, is there another fee for that?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it's due every year. It's an annual.
Okay.
Am I understanding correct, Dan?
Okay.
Yes.
The annual fee will be the same, the one twenty, annual fee.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I get that on the fee schedule.
Okay.
As well as review. That was the biggest thing, is that they will have that and a review.
I'm gonna come up with some type of review form that all the boxes need to be checked if it's gonna be renewed for them.
Yeah.
So I'm work, I have like a year to work on that, so.
Thank you.
Well, and they have to have Chuck come over prior to chickens on the property to make sure.
Okay.
And they need to know that, too, that-
Okay, are we ready for garbage ordinance then? So what in the world are we discussing here?
Okay. Okay. Do you want me to talk?
Sure.
Thank you. So in the packet, we have the old garbage, um, ordinance from two thousand and eighteen. That is the one that we, if you look to the next page, we revised that on the twentieth of December, twenty twenty-two. I, I was trying to make, understand Jerry's letter that he wrote that the second reading was on hold, the ordinance is up for a second reading. That's not the new one that we have. I copied all of the, um, minutes of how this ordinance all played out. And you can get December sixth, twenty twenty-two is when the first reading was.
Twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three?
Twenty twenty.
Thank you.
Twenty twenty-two. Yeah, okay. So that's when we, we ended up changing it was in twenty twenty-two to the new one. Okay, so we had the first reading on December sixth and I highlighted that first reading. And then the second reading happened on December twentieth, twenty twenty-two, where we made a motion limiting, limiting it to residents only. So that's the one that's the new one. Now, we had another one that came up in January, a proposed one. If you go to January twenty-third, those, um, minutes. First reading, I have it highlighted, there's no action on there. And then on February eighth of twenty twenty-four, if you read the back page there, second reading, um, motion made and seconded to discuss to, for discussion to table for review. So this proposed one has never been approved. But the one that's, we have now is approved and that is how our sign that we paid a thousand dollars for reads that it's for in-town residents only.
Correct.
Okay, so what are we considering in-town residents only? How about Fairgrounds Place?
No.
They're not in town.
The reason that we changed that and remember from P and Z is we want these people to annex in the city. If you give them all their mother amenities, they're not gonna annex in the city. And that's why Fairgrounds Place wasn't allowed.
But do they pay for garbage? Do they pay a garbage fee and have waste yard dumpsters?
They're not in the ci, they're not in the city. We want to annex in the city. That's why we did that.
Who builds them?
Ordinance maybe did.
The city bills them.
For garbage.
Well, that doesn't matter. It got, it got passed.
Right.
It passed in P and Z, it passed at the board, and now come January, we're changing it back again.
Trying.
Trying to. That one has not been approved yet. And we also spent a thousand dollars on a sign for it to reflect the first one that we passed.
And we spent months changing this, getting it through P and Z, through town board. So to make the statement that people on fairgrounds can dump cannot be said and cannot be done. It is in-town residents only.
We have some people out on Gumbo Lily that do get trash too. They're not allowed to. Yeah, it's worded in-town residents only. Now we're trying to change it again to water customers, which we can go ahead and do, garbage customers. Um, I mean, I don't care what we do. The proposed one has not been passed yet and when we do pass that, we will need to, um, probably buy another thousand dollars sign to reflect that.
If we pass it.
Well, I, my feelings is I think Fairgrounds Place, I mean, true, if we give it to them, they're not, but they're so close to the city limits and they're only like, I think Fairground is, would only be fair that Fairgrounds Place gets to put the garbage in. Because.
Why don't they be annexed then?
Yeah, well, I, I see, I hear what you're saying that too, but they're getting their garbage picked up. We are billing them from the town office. They're getting water. Why are they not allowed to dump in the dumpster?
They're also a zone residential ag. They have twice the waste. The waste that they've dumped in there has been contaminated. We've had mega problems as well as if you're doing that, you have to open it up to Gumbo Lily. And that's what we beat our conversation on is that you're doing twice the acreage on Gumbo Lily and then properties are filling our dumpsters up instantly.
What are you referring to that they're filling that is beyond the scope?
Hazardous.
What are you referring to that they're putting in that you don't like?
It isn't the aspect. It's when certain residents down there started coming in with their tree branches, there was trash, garbage, all included in that, that they didn't have a care one that was included in that that we were pulling out. I should say I was pulling out of that constantly. And then you've got the horse, the straw, manure.
What about fireplace ashes?
Spilled over onto the ground.
I've heard about those being in there from citizens in town.
Pardon?
What about fireplace ashes? I've heard about those being in there from town. Those aren't supposed to be in there.
Fireplace ashes aren't a problem.
Really? They can catch on fire?
Not when they've been set out. We've never.
Well, how do you know how long they've been set out?
Cause they've never started a fire.
Yet.
Yet.
But we can't release that.
And I have. And they have used common sense about it on what they dump in there and how they dump it in there. And a lot of people will dump it on their gardens, which is great compost.
Well, that's fine with me.
So right now there's a cardboard box in there.
That should've been taken out before they were pushed down then.
It hasn't been pushed down yet.
I did over the weekend and there was.
Well, there is a cardboard box in there right now, cause I drove by it tonight.
So is the issue that the yard waste dumpsters are paid via the garbage fees? At, no?
They're just paid through the town.
So the.
Not any fees.
But they're, the garbage fees in portion are paid to the dumpsters.
Not through the budget. The budget is budgeted for yard waste dumpsters only.
Is that a separate line item?
For its own. It, it, there's barely.
So who pays for the dumpsters? How is that paid?
We pay for it as a town for convenience.
I think we just need to eliminate them then, cause it's more trouble than it's worth anymore. But I've thought that for a long time.
Well, and we've had that discussion before too.
Yeah.
And that falls into the category of, um, how clean do you want the town to look because it does, it does help having them there. It helps.
It does, but the hassle is just unbelievable every stinking year.
Every year and every, every year.
Six months, whatever.
Well, it is, it's.
It was.
Well, I get, my, you know, and like I said, my feelings is if the town bills them for their garbage and their water, why are they not allowed to put, uh, branches in the, in the big dumpsters?
Cause they're not within the municipal limits.
But they're paying the same water and sewer fees. I'm not advocating either way. I'm just saying.
And the town's billing them.
And they're paying higher water and sewer.
So then they should annex it.
Well, I agree.
Then when their annexation.
So I was proposed, here's one for you, Dan. I was proposed, give me a moratorium on my taxes and I'll annex in instantly. I said, yeah, that'll go far.
We did the P and Z on that for what, three, four meetings? And the whole positioning was with the people out of town, out of municipal limits. If they wanna annex in, they can use our services. But if they're not gonna annex in, then they don't deserve to use our services and they have that ability.
One little dumpster. What is it with one little dumpster that might, you know?
What their properties are twice as big as any of the other properties in the community. And the ones on Gumbo Lily are three times and some bigger than that, four times.
So if you're not paying for water and, or for, uh, garbage service in town, are you still entitled to use the dumpsters?
Absolutely not unless you're an in-town resident.
If you are an in-town resident and you are not paying for a tote, you are not paying a garbage fee. You don't, you still can use the dumpsters.
This isn't, in the new ordinance listed that you have to be a garbage user with being an in-town resident.
You'll have to be paying for garbage. That's not fair.
Garbage in res, if you read this, be it ordained.
Yeah, it isn't passed yet either.
Residents who live within the municipal town limits, yard waste will not be collected and disposed of. And it must be delivered without a container to the yard waste dumpsters, containers located on first, of course. No yard waste shall be commingled with any trash, rubbish or anything else. We as P and Z and town board went through this for that purpose, cause it did say garbage users were able to use that dumpster if they paid garbage services. That's why we eliminated that away from this so it was clear before we made the sign, which took another two meetings, three meetings to orchestrate the sign and put that together so it was fair for the in-town residents. The in-town residents are the ones that we appreciate and that are the ones that are in advantage of that dumpsters.
But if you're not paying for garbage, you should not be able to use the dumpster. If you're paying for garbage.
That ordinance was changed so that that was taken out.
Saying, I don't think that's correct. I don't think it's fair. Yes, sir.
Um, I just wanted to ask that question again. I wasn't quite sure what the answer was. Um, so is there a, a separate line item in the budget for the yard waste?
Where I was at.
That, and it's.
Yeah.
So that's, that's what we collected.
Which, which account is it?
Three users. The total of garbage budget is fifty-two thousand, three eighty-seven. Supplies and materials, fifty thousand, eight ninety, and that's based off two hundred and thirty-three users at sixteen seventy-seven a month times twelve months plus cleanup.
So then the yard waste.
Is this the dumpsters?
That would be the dumpsters.
So the fourteen ninety-seven is to dump the dumpster to come and have them.
So it's fifteen hundred dollars a year to dump the dumpster.
So it is a separate, why not?
Yes, it is.
So how many times do we have the dumpsters taken away and emptied?
Can I see it real quick?
When I was pushing them down, I could get one month.
See the garbage?
For a dumpster.
It's like the second, no.
That's good.
And it costs how much?
Three hundred dollars a pole.
That's a dollar a day or two, two, or a dollar a day. Well, it sounded good. And then how many residents? I mean, if we're gonna get nitpicky about this.
It's just our in-town.
I'm sorry?
I said it's just the in-town. It's.
Yeah, but how many residents are actually?
In-town, I have to.
Paying garbage fees.
Off your water users, cause you got separating fairgrounds and separating gumbo.
Yeah, but they have their own water system, Gumbo Lily does. We have nothing to do with that. Everyone's a streamer. They have their own water for the fairgrounds.
So, so Vicki, to your point, the, the dumpsters are paid out of the garbage pool. And so since they are paying the garbage fee, then that's why you believe they should be able to dump in there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, but they're not out of the garbage.
I have two forty in-town, seventeen out-of-town.
That get.
Garbage, seventeen people.
And what are you saying out of town? What are you considering out of town?
Fairgrounds and Gumbo Lily.
Gumbo Lily.
And there's seventeen?
Seventeen of them.
I guess seventeen people. I don't understand how come, uh, they can't use the dumpster.
Well, if they're paying garbage fees, they should be able to.
Then we need to change the ordinance again.
And if you triple in the amount of times you dump because of their properties, that was our contention before.
Well, it's gone back and forth like a rubber band over the years.
It was going fine until the board changed and then that was tried to change back.
The problem with that is I don't, I, you know, that, that's a yearly thing. The board can change yearly and, and the new board can feel one way totally different than what the, the last board and, and that was always one of the things that Shanna always complained about. It's like I got five bosses and they're different, you know, every year I got different bosses and, and the bosses feel differently than the bosses did last year. You know, so you're constantly changing. Instead of just moving forward, you're changing things from the past. Which, I mean, that's.
Sometimes you have to change the past to go forward.
Absolutely. I, I won't even argue that point, but it's, you know.
Yes, my big thing is if they wanna annex in, they can use our services. They told us flat out, no. They, and all, we spent a year with letters and asking for them to annex in voluntarily, annex in to help us provide them sewer, provide them water free of charge to hook them up in our loan grant process. And they refused us. And so them services are for the ones that are in-town.
They also found out how much their taxes were going to go up.
Pennies.
No, it wasn't pennies. No, it wasn't.
Because we had them.
Well, it isn't anymore because it was checked.
We had them listed.
No. It was a considerable increase. And it was, and that, one of the citizens checked this last time.
There are some of those people that have probably their water, sewer, garbage.
I know.
On fairgrounds.
Yep.
So why does that disqualify them from, from the stuff from the, using anybody else?
Annexation.
Well, they're not within the town limits.
And like I say, if you feel that you wanna change to the new proposal and wait for a new sign if it passes. But like I say, the contention with the in-town people using the dumpster was we eliminated people piling everything in their yards, cause they wouldn't haul it off. And that degree, the messes that went along with that.
We've got a lot of messes in our town that aren't hauling stuff off.
Yeah. That's a great point.
But we're working on that. Got two shots.
That's a whole different subject.
I know that. Thank you. So, um, I don't know how you wanna handle this.
Is that it stays with the new one as it is and we move ahead. Is my opinion.
So what are you gonna do to them if they, uh, somebody? The fines, fines are on the.
Correct.
Lusted on the sign. Who's gonna enforce them?
Any trustee, any citizen?
Well, I for one do not agree with having ash in there. It's supposed to be for yard waste, not fireplace waste. And I really hesitate because of fire danger. I just don't think that's where that goes. That's looking for an accident to happen.
Ashes are out and those are the ones that cause fires.
We've never ever had an experience.
Not yet. There's always a time. That doesn't mean everybody's smart, Dan. If you're smart about it, that's great. The guy down the block may not be.
We've never had an issue with it.
But that doesn't mean it's not going, can't happen.
Well, it's been twenty-five years.
Yeah, twenty-six might be the number.
Yeah. Well, I know our nephew, his daughter said his, the ashes out on the deck. Oh, well, guess what? There was a hot one and guess what? The deck burnt down. Because she thought the ashes were out.
So, um, I guess you can put this, if you wanna put it on the agenda, put it on the agenda for the proposed and we can bring it to a motion and vote. That's all you can do.
To leave it the same or change the wording to a new?
Change the wording to what?
I don't think it should be changed. I feel the new, what we've changed, you that money we spent to have this. money we spent to have this ordinance published and the sign made is satisfactory. Clarifies it for in-town residents and gives us.
And that's two years, a year and a half old, two years old, year and a half old? Yes, ma'am.
I I will just state, just so that everybody knows, and because I don't, you know, I will not vote yes to out-of-town residents being able to use the dumpster.
Well, good for you.
So I'm just telling you. So when that comes up, that's how I'm voting on that. If you wanna add the part that only in-town garbage users can use it, that's I don't have a problem with that at all.
That's the old one.
I think I would include that. I.
I don't have a problem with that.
And I won't because that was our old one. That's where our confusion was that we had such a problem with P and Z and going through it.
Yeah.
Mr. Garbage User.
Well, then we're gonna sit with new, proposed, and old for an eternity. That's what I'm seeing.
What was that statement now?
It's at a standstill for the most part. You won't vote for this. You won't vote for that. I won't vote for this, blah, blah, blah. We're basically at a standstill again.
Not necessarily. It just depends on how Cal's gonna vote. I won't vote for a new one.
Why are you picking on Cal?
Well, because he's a diabler.
Giving the wrong opinion right off.
I would suggest we put that on for the next agenda to discuss the
The new proposed one that.
Proposed ordinance as stated. And go from there.
The other item of the garbage that we didn't have on the agenda that needs to be changed is the dumpster that we were gonna talk about and bring forward.
Yeah, we do need to discuss that.
Which dumpster?
Whether.
The one that I had to move.
Whether people can have dumpsters or not in town.
It's listed that you can't. You have to have a tote and you can have that on a commercial lot.
Right. And so like right now, or maybe not right now, but a couple of weeks ago, whoever lives on Elena's Gillingstead's property has a dumpster there.
That was the, yeah, but that's a company that brings them in and takes them.
I understand that. However, when you're talking dumpsters here, it it the way I read the.
If that's their business.
That 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 does not allow that. I I know they're doing that. But the ordinance does not allow for that.
But he had one at his house.
And should have been able to remain because of the wording we have could be.
But it was for construction.
No.
But it doesn't say that.
I'm talking my regular dumpster, not my construction dumpster.
I'm not going there tonight. We're we're.
But the wording needs to be corrected.
Well, so then I suppose because we had a dumpster down on our property because we were tearing down, that was wrong too then.
It's only residential.
It 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 depends on how you read it. That's all it is like.
Excuse me.
Should be something in the ordinance about remodel dumpster versus.
Okay, but that's that's a whole different thing from yard waste.
I'm just saying, I think that's.
So that should be on another work session.
I think that's what we're trying.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, items from citizens. Nada. I make a motion that we adjourn. We're not now. That is eliminated. It was in a light put on there. It was eliminated.
Oh, Dan, you're impossible. No.
It's on the agenda.
If that was a mistake.
Well, it's posted tonight.
Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you. I just wanna make a statement that everything that has been going on in the meetings, as far as statements made, we are moving forward. Statements that passed of what's been done in the past, but members still lead by emotion and can't let the past be forgotten.
Ah.
And so if we're going to move forward, as we've made agreements with all members in previous meetings, handshakes, everything else that we're gonna let.
We're done.
Okay.
This input isn't done.
This is done. Because you're going back and you're starting fights and that's not what we're here for.
I've insinuated any names that I could say anything to any.
Excuse me. This has been a mistake. I did not catch it. I apologize. I would appreciate that you honor the fact that I am apologizing for a mistake. It was not to be put on here. Trustee input was not to be included.
But if you do understand, as what Mitch said, it's a posted agenda, and I am in the middle of my trustee input, and I'm about to finish my trustee input.
Hurry up.
Instead of being interrupted while the.
Oh, you are the king of interrupts. So let's get this done.
As I said, we all shook hands that we were going to move forward and that this was it and that we were gonna support where we were at. And it wasn't us that did not follow that support.
It never is.
So I'm sorry for that, and I feel we need to move forward, as we've said many times, and to be able to get things done for the town, the better the dump.
Okay, then I have some.
Yes, ma'am.
Then I guess if that's where we're moving forward, then Dan Hallsworth, you need to remove some of your grudges that you have on somebody else benefiting themselves and you didn't get a chance to.
And that's where you start mentioning names and threats.
Um, don't go there. That's enough. You had your say. She's had her say. Do you guys have anything to say? Thank you very much. I make a motion that we adjourn at seven fifty-six. This is precisely why we don't do this anymore. Did I get a second?
Yes. I didn't even think about it.
Who wasn't? Either one of us. It doesn't matter. Thank you.